Y'all seen that electric bill? Y'all got, uh, y'all got Pat's car plugged in? You gotta, you gotta run and fix your car. Pat, your car plugged in for me? Charge it.
Yeah, fool. We're gonna call this meeting to order. Councilman Cook is gonna lead us in prayer. Councilman Nakken is gonna lead us in the pledge.
Dear Lord, bless the work of our hands, the work of our minds, and the work of our hearts. May each day be an offering of worship to you. May your goodness flow through our every deed. And may you keep us, shelter us, protect us, and feed us. That we may be blessed with the finances we need and have the love and the grace to give generously to all those that are in need. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Mr. Castile. You okay? All right. We welcome you to the special joint meeting of the City Parish Council and the LPUA. We as your representatives in the Lafayette Consolidated Government welcome your involvement and encourage your participation. This meeting is a public hearing. If you wish to address the council on any item on this agenda, please fill out a blue request to address the council form noting the agenda item number. The blue form is available to you in the far end and should be submitted to the council clerk, Ms. Veronica L. Williams seated to my left in the middle prior to the call of the agenda item. It is important to fill out the blue form completely and note the specific agenda item number about which you wish to speak. If the card is not completely filled out or is not legible to the clerk, you will not be given the opportunity to speak. If you have materials you wish to submit to the council, please give those to Mrs. Williams along with your blue form. In an effort to allow everyone an opportunity to be heard, the five-minute rule will be in effect. Speakers shall refrain from debating personal attacks and from making confrontational or derogatory comments. I'm requesting that the first row to my left be used for media only. Lastly, food and drinks are not allowed in the auditorium, and all phones and electronic devices shall be silenced from this point forward. I am also requesting that anyone who approaches the council state their name and title for the official record. Meeting procedures are by resolution and not by Robert's rules of order. Documents including agenda, ordinances, resolutions, and minutes related to this meeting are posted online at www.lafayette.la.gov or refer to the web address on the top of the agenda. The council encourages your involvement and participation by volunteering for boards and commissions. If you are interested in finding out which board suits your interests, please call 291-8800 or pick up a pamphlet at the door. Chair announcements. Again, this is a joint meeting of the council and LPUA to introduce the budget. At times during the course of this meeting, I will defer to LPUA Chair Bruce Conk to preside over LPUA matters. A meeting of the Lafayette Public Power Authority will follow this meeting immediately. I will be presiding over the budget reviews as finance chair with the first meeting being scheduled October, August the 3rd, I'm sorry, August the 3rd, to hear the budgets for parks and recreation, community development, planning, zoning and development, adult correction, and informational services. Copies of the budget calendar may be found posted here at City Hall, posted at the libraries, available at the council office front desk, and on the LCG website. Each review will be broadcast live via AOC. Please be advised that the departmental budget reviews each begin at 1:00 p.m. A citizen may speak on budget matters related to the department or departments being discussed that day. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing for citizen input on the budget on matters related to the proposed fiscal year 1718 budget will be held Tuesday, August the 22nd at 5:30 p.m. here at 7:05 West University Avenue in the council auditorium. Citizen input is encouraged. If you would like to view a copy of the proposed budget document, it will be available online at www.lafayette.la.gov. I want to announce that council member from District 5 Jared Bellard and council member from District 9 William Terrio are unable to attend tonight's budget introduction meeting. I do not have any additional announcements at this time. I will be giving my budget message on opening day, so at this time, we're gonna go to council announcements? Are there any council announcements? Seeing none, we're gonna go to the executive mayor's report. Mr. Robidoux?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Obviously, there's nothing for us to report on, any announcements to make, other than what we're all here for today as it relates to the budget.
Thank you so much. So, we're gonna go to the introductory ordinance. Again, regarding the introductory ordinance, I will ask Jeremy to read the ordinance, and he'll read it once for both. I will then call for a motion for the council to introduce the ordinance. Then the LPUA Chair, Mr. Conk, is going to ask for a motion from LPUA to introduce the ordinance. Thereafter, the administration will be recognized for their budget comments, led by Chief Financial Officer Ms. Lori Toops for the finance presentation. Okay? Okay, I don't see any questions at this time. So Jeremy, would you please read item number five?
Ordinance 153, 2017. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Parish Council and the Lafayette Public Utilities Authority adopting an operating and five-year capital improvement budget of revenues and expenditures for the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government for the fiscal year beginning November 1st, 2017 and ending October 31st, 2018.
I'll entertain a motion by the council. Motion by Castile, second by Nakken.
I need a motion and a second from the LPUA, please. Move by Ms. Cook, second by Mr. Lewis.
Okay, at this time, now that we have everything introduced, Mr. Robidoux, this is in fact an opportunity for any of you, Ms. Toops will have her opportunity, but this is an opportunity. Do you have any statements you would like to make specific to the budget?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members, thank you for your attendance today. Certainly, Ms. Toops is gonna go into a lot more detail, but let me just say that, again, I would like to thank Lori and her staff. They make this part of my job a lot easier than it certainly could be, and so I have the full confidence in the document that she's gonna present. It's unfortunately, I think as most of you know, the economy has not quite made the turn that we had all hoped it would make for the end of '16 and early '17. I think you'll find that there's some effect of the flood recovery that helped out on the revenue side, but I strongly believe that that's temporary and that it's not a good idea for us to budget in assuming that that's gonna stay that way forever. And so, all of those things are contemplated in the numbers that you're gonna see. And I think it's a fiscally responsible budget you'll find, but again, there's not a whole lot of difference between last year's budget and this year's budget, other than to say, I think strategically, we have made some adjustments that I think will end up paying off for us in both the short term and the long term from an investment standpoint. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it back over to you and have Ms. Toops provide the details of what's in the budget.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions from council members for Mr. Robidoux before we go to Ms. Toops? Okay. Seeing none. Ms. Toops, welcome.
Good afternoon, or evening, I'm not really sure. I'm very happy to be here today to present the proposed 1718 operating and capital improvement budget. I'd like to thank all of the budget staff and the finance staff for their assistance in preparing this document, and of course, the endless meetings I spent with our mayor president and our CAO in preparing this for you. I'm very happy to say that for the fourth year in a row, Lafayette Consolidated Government has earned the distinguished Budget Presentation Award. This award, in order to earn this award, your budget document must be one that serves as an operations guide, a financial plan, and a communications device for the next fiscal year. Our adopted 1617 budget was sent to three independent professionals across the United States, and they were graded to make sure that we reached all of this criteria. There are certain items that are required and certain items that are recommended, and we're very proud to say that once again, we're there. We also achieved, for the very first time, we earned the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. This is a similar award, but this is for our audited financial statements. And what this tells you is that we have minimum requirements set by the state when we prepare a budget and when we prepare an audit. We have minimum requirements set by our charter when we prepare an audit in a budget, but there are a set of best practices that people have come to expect. And in order for you to make good financial decisions, it's recommended that we provide you with this additional information. During the budget process, we are gonna look at all of the expenditure line items, but I encourage you to look at the other sections of the budget book that provide the supplementary information. You'll find areas with 10 years of statistical data. That information could be very useful in providing you additional information, and the citizens, when you make decisions regarding this budget. So what's new in this budget? You're gonna see the creation of a new development and revitalization revolving loan fund. You will see the printing department being migrated to 311 Call Center. Planning, zoning, and development has a name change to Development and Planning. ATAC is moving to Development and Planning. You will see employees added for the opening of a new library branch. You'll also see some new expense line items that I don't want you to think it's an increase in the budget of the marshal and the judges. What it actually is, is it was brought to our attention that the parish general fund is actually required by state law to pay a portion of the marshal and the judge's salary, so that is being implemented in this budget. We do not have any general pay increases included in this proposed budget. Also, what's not new, it just was not reinstated, was some of the reductions that we made last year in the parish general fund side. We made a lot of reductions, you may recall them. In particular, we cut the parish portion of arts and culture and social service grants. We cut the parish's portion of money that went to the Cajun Dome. We made some other departmental cuts parish-wide, and very little, if any of that, was able to be restored because the parish general fund did not have available revenues. Our financial policies are maintained in this proposed budget. We are maintaining especially the fund balance policy that we initiated several years ago when the parish general fund balance fell below $10 million. We knew at that level it couldn't maintain any economic downturns, and we knew that the bond rating agencies were using different criteria, and we risked having our bond rating lowered. So we are maintaining that financial policy by having a strong fund balance in the city general fund, which is the main operating fund of this government. Other financial policies that are being maintained include not only the fund balance policy, but our debt coverage policy of 2.0, our expenditure, and our budgetary policies. And more information on those policies can be found in the introduction section of the budget book. Of the revenues in this budget, sales tax plays a large part. You will see sales taxes budgeted at what we refer to as flat to actual. We look at actual sales taxes collected compared to what we budgeted. So far through June, collections in the city are up 1.75% from last year. In the parish, they're up 4.3% from last year. So we looked at that as that it will probably continue into next year as flood recovery still continues into next year. So we are projecting that sales taxes will come in this year at 84.5 million, and we budgeted 84.5 million for next year. Sales tax distribution in Lafayette, I usually go over this with you every year just to remind you that most of the sales taxes collected goes to the state. 56 cents of every dollar goes to the state. 22 cents goes to the schools. If it is a city sales tax dollar, only 8 cents goes into the city general fund, and 14 cents goes into our city sales tax capital fund that's restricted only for capital purchases. So that money can't be used to pay police and fire salaries or operations. If it's a penny in the unincorporated areas, that 22 cents is divided equally between the parish general fund and the sheriff. Another item affecting revenues in this budget is ad valorem taxes, most of which is dedicated to a specific purpose, both city ad valorem and parish ad valorem. Right now, we are estimating a slight increase of about 4%. We do not have the numbers from the assessor yet. When we get those numbers during this budget process, we may have to come back and adjust this item, but we feel just based on historical data that this was a good number to start with. Other items affecting revenue is a decrease in federal transit grants. In 2010, we received 2.2 million dollars in federal transit grants. That is dropping down to 1.4 million for this year. We see some decreases in charges for services. It's a decrease in uninsured losses and workers' compensation, and a decrease in insurance premiums. So when we talk about a decrease in revenue, that sounds bad, but in this case, this is a good thing. Because we act as our own insurance company, we are self-funded, we have an insurance fund, and the revenues that go into that fund are actually expenses elsewhere. So because we had a decrease in uninsured losses and workers' compensation losses in all the departments, we have a corresponding decrease in revenues in the insurance fund. The same thing goes with our insurance premiums. Although we're self-insured, we do buy some excess loss policies, some catastrophic policies that will help kick in to cover some losses should we experience something catastrophic. And because we were able to save money on those policies, we were able to decrease some insurance premiums. Another large item affecting revenues in the budget is the city ILOT. The city ILOT provides 23% of the city general fund revenue. There are two parts to the ILOT calculation, though. We calculate what the ILOT is, but whether or not the ILOT paid depends upon how much money is left over at the end of the day in LUS. They need to have put a certain amount of money off to the side to make sure that they can maintain and take care of their plant and capital. We call it a capital improvements fund. So they have to put a certain amount of money off to the side to maintain that capital before the city can collect that ILOT. Some expenditure changes that you'll see in this budget, you'll see a decrease in contractual services of 2.5 million for the Louisiana Avenue Tiff. You'll see a decrease in internal appropriations of $500,000 for transit. Another decrease of about $500,000 for mosquito control. You'll see an increase in internal appropriations of $1.5 million for codes and permits. Part of that is because they are taking over the ATAC operations, and the other part is because they're running out of fund balance, and so they're gonna need some money from the city general fund. You will see the creation of the development and revitalization revolving loan fund and an increase in sick and accrued leave expenses. You'll see a decrease of $664,000 in the police department. That is primarily due to a reduction in the Safe Flight, Safe Speed program. You may recall in the past, the amount of money that was paid to the contractor came in as revenue to the city general fund, and then it went out as an expense. But we don't expect that that program will be up and operational till part of the way into next fiscal year. And you'll see about a $10 million decrease expected in utilities for the cost of fuel. You'll also see some personnel changes throughout. Note that the decrease of one position in the police department is a little bit deceiving. We are taking six people out of the police department for ATAC and moving them to Development and Planning, but we're adding five new positions to the police department. So they are getting additional positions, but some other employees are being allocated to another department. And I believe earlier, maybe last council meeting, or maybe it's coming up in the near future, the police department is going to apply for a grant that might fund some new positions in the police department. So I changed it up a bit on you this year. We're gonna go over parish-wide revenues and expenses first. Parish-wide revenues are estimated at $86.2 million. Of that amount, 15% is for the parish general fund, and that is the amount of money that is available for general governmental services at the parish level. And that is that little slice of pie right there, that's 15%. All the rest of the revenues on the parish-wide budget are dedicated to a specific source. They are restricted in their use, and they cannot be used for general governmental purposes. So we have $86.2 million in revenue. We have $88.9 million in expenditure. So we are spending more at the parish level than what we have coming in, and what we are doing is using fund balance from prior years. Of that $88.9 million in parish-wide expenses, $13.7 million is in the general fund, and as I said before, available for general governmental purposes. $75.2 million is in restricted funds, and the parish does not have any money that is dedicated to capital. So what that means is that the capital needs on a parish level have to be met with the money that's available in the general fund or the money that's available in the restricted funds. So all of the capital will come from those. We are estimating about $62.3 million in property tax or ad valorem tax. We use those terms interchangeably compared to $59.8 million last year. There is no change in the millage rate proposed in this budget. We are estimating a slight increase in assessed valuation. Once again, once we get those numbers from the assessor, we may have to revisit this. A couple of slides ago, I looked at total revenues. This slide here shows that one part of revenue that was related to taxes alone. So total revenues was $86.2 million. Out of that, parish-wide $62.3 million is in ad valorem taxes. Most of those taxes are dedicated and restricted for a specific purpose. The only amount that is not dedicated and restricted is this little slice of pie down at the bottom here, and that is $4.1 million, or 7% of ad valorem taxes collected at the parish level is available for general governmental purposes. You may recall this slide, I used to put up there, I used to have a dollar bill with some slices in it. I decided to show it a little bit different this way, give you a little bit more detail. This takes a parish-wide property tax dollar and tells you where the money goes. So out of that dollar, 39 cents goes to schools, 19.6 cents goes to the sheriff, 8 cents goes to others, and those others are listed at the bottom, the Economic Development Authority, airport, Bayou Vermillion, the assessor, and those type things. Everything else from the library down is what is included in this proposed budget. And that amount is 33 cents. So 33 cents of every parish-wide dollar is included in this proposed budget, and it's divided as shown on that graph or on that chart. The parish budget consists of several different operating funds. We call them special revenue funds. When you have a restricted tax, we usually open a separate fund for that so we can track and maintain proper accounting to make sure that the dollars are used where they are restricted. These are the operational funds at the parish level. This shows you the money they're expected to have at the beginning of the fiscal year, what they're gonna collect, and some expenses. And this is not all ad valorem taxes. Some of these may have some user fees or fines or service charges included with them. This would be the total revenues collected in that fund. You can see that the War Memorial Building in the corner rely on operating subsidies from the parish general fund. The Correctional Center and the courthouse complex, the money from the courthouse complex also funds expenses at the Correctional Center. I like to take these subsidies and project them out to the next future year so you can see what is going to be expected. I think the biggest need that we're going to see in the future is in the Correctional Center. It is getting a subsidy right now of $2 million, and we need to make sure that if we're prepared to cut the budget... to cut the budget or find a revenue source in order to keep the correctional center at full operations. Moving on to the parish general fund. The parish general fund, we said that the parish-wide budget was 80-something million. The parish general fund is $12.7 million of that 80 million. You can see that most of the revenues in the parish general fund come from a sales tax that is expected to generate about $4.7 million and a property or ad valorem tax that's expected to generate about $4.1 million. Parish general fund expenditures are estimated to be $13.7 million. Most of these expenses, 31%, is related to the courts, the district attorney, the court and judicial system of the parish of Lafayette. That consumes about $4.3 million of the budget. The elected officials slide there, you see, is 11%. That elected officials is everything from the justice of the peace, the constables, council members, registrar of voters. There's a lot of people that are included in that amount. And you'll see that when we go through our regular departmental reviews. This is a summary of the parish general fund pro forma. The detailed pro forma can be found on page 41 of your budget book. What I want you to notice here is the total expenditure line. That's the third line down or the line in the middle. We were able to budget $13.7 million in expenditures in the parish general fund for this year. That amount is projected to be reduced by almost $1 million next year, and even in a couple of years thereafter, it's not projected that it'll reach $13.7 million. So that will mean additional cuts will be necessary in the parish general fund in future years. So I almost feel like I should have recorded that because I'm going to say the same thing about the next two funds. We are now looking at the parish drainage fund. This is a summary of the pro forma. The detailed pro forma can be found on page 47 of the proposed budget book. And the main thing here also that you should notice is the total expenditure line. We are able to budget $9.7 million in this proposed budget, but those amounts, too, are projected to decrease over the next several years. Once again, this is the parish road and bridge fund pro forma. The detailed pro forma can be found on page 46 of your budget book. And once again, we're able to budget $16.4 million, but that amount is projected to decrease every year. So we're about midway through my presentation. Not sure what this has to do with the budget, but it was a nice little break. See if anybody needed a drink of water like I do, or if anybody needed to take a break. I thought it was interesting.
Mr. Nakam?
Ms. Laura, when I'm looking at this on the drainage fund, so we short $1.8 million, right?
Yes, we are using $1.8 million of fund balance in the drainage fund. So therefore, that money is not going to be available for use the following year.
Got you. Okay, thanks.
Mr. Kohn?
All right, what was the adjusted funds balance on the '16 audit report?
For the drainage fund?
No, overall. What was the fund balance coming out of the audit report for the parish?
Well, the parish has many different funds. So if you're asking me for the parish general fund, I have that number here.
More specific, what was the general fund?
The parish general fund, after the audit, was $1 million, $1 million and a couple thousand.
Good, thank you.
So we do budget conservatively. We try to budget revenues conservatively. We don't want to over-budget revenues and then have us incur expenses that we can't afford to pay for, and that's the reason why that fund balance ended up with more money than was originally projected. Okay, now we'll look at citywide revenue and expenditures.
If you could just hold on one second, your boss would like to say something.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to point out to Bruce also that the ending fund balance for the parish, we're spending it all the way down to $90-something thousand. So we're not hanging on to any money, you know, to be conservative. So the spend-down is there, and we have to leave some just in case, you know, these are budgeted, so they're not going to be 100% accurate, and we don't want to go to a negative. So there's only $90-something thousand that's left after this parish budget is done.
And in a strange way of communicating this, it's actually more than we had in fund balance last fiscal year.
That is correct. And again, that had to do with the fact that the audit came in and said that it was a little bit different than what we had done in the budget. But so, taking that audited number as our beginning, which is the million that Ms. Toops said, then forecasting revenues and expenditures, we're saying we're going to be down to $90-something thousand.
But in the end, it's a poor fiscal condition.
Then there's no question about that.
Okay, looking at the city funds. The total city budget is $462.2 million. Out of that amount, $104.8 million is the city general fund, $324.3 million is city restricted funds, and that includes LUS, fiber, and the city's debt service funds. $33.1 million is available for pay-as-you-go capital projects, and that's generated from the city's sales tax. The $104.8 million is available for city general governmental services such as police and fire. Just like the parish, the city is also made of many different special revenue funds. The difference is that only the recreation fund on the city side has a small portion of its budget covered with the ad valorem tax. $3.6 million of the recreation budget comes from a subsidy from the city general fund. All of the funds listed here are subsidized by the city general fund to the tune of $11.4 million. So none of these funds function or are self-supporting. They're all subsidized with the city general fund. Looking at just a very small projected increase on what that operating subsidy will be in the next couple of years, you can see in three years, it goes from $11.4 to $11.8. The city is not proposing any change in millages in this proposed budget. We are estimating that city ad valorem taxes or property taxes will come in at around $28.6 million compared to $27.5 million this year. Once again, we're still waiting on the numbers from the assessor, so during the budget process, you may hear me come back to you with additional information on ad valorem taxes. Here, I broke a city property tax dollar down by where that city dollar is dedicated. So for every city property tax dollar collected, .46 goes to city police and fire, .30 goes to the city general fund. And we got a phone call from a citizen not long ago and wanted to know why he had to pay us alimony because he wasn't married to the city. I'm not really sure why that term exists, but that is a state statute reference, and that is the amount of money that funds city general governmental purposes. $10 goes to recreation and playgrounds, $0.7 to city streets and roads, and $0.6 to city public buildings. Moving on to the city general fund. The city general fund is projected to have $101.7 million in revenues for this proposed budget. 75% of those revenues come from city property taxes, sales taxes, and the city ILOT. The city general fund expenditures are projected to be $104.8 million. 57% of the city general fund budget is budgeted for public safety. This is a summary version of the city general fund pro forma. The detailed version can be found on page 40 of the proposed budget book. What I want to draw your attention to here is that we are able to maintain our financial policy by having a strong percent of fund balance available, a strong percent of expenditures during the three projected years after this proposed budget. The absolute minimum is 20%. This is a summarized version of the city's sales tax capital improvement fund pro forma. We will go over each department's requests when we meet with them during this budget process. You can find the detail of this pro forma on page 42 of your proposed budget book. It's time for another drink of water, and you can guess what's coming up next. This is the utility system fund pro forma. The detailed pro forma can be found on page 43 of your proposed budget book. What I want to draw your attention to here is that we are projected to generate $246.8 million in operating revenues. $200 million of those will be operating expenditures. The rest of the money is available for debt service and capital improvement needs. The communication system pro forma, the detailed one, can be found on page 44 in your proposed budget book. The communication system is expected to generate about $37 million in retail sales next year. Operating expenses is projected to be about $22.5, and the remaining balance is available for debt service and future capital needs. I have just a couple more slides. We have the summary of the entire consolidated city, parish, and there's also a group of funds that are not in the city or the parish because they belong to both, and that is our group insurance fund, our self-insurance fund, and our vehicle maintenance fund. When we add all these funds together with the parish and the city funds, we have a total consolidated budget of $632 million. Of that $632 million, $118 million is in the city and the parish general fund, $460 million is in restricted funds that can only be spent for their designated purpose, and $53.2 million is included in the capital budget. Combined, it's $632.3 million in revenues. Out of that, 38% is from utility sales, 28% is from taxes, and that's both city and When we look at our expenditures, you can see that 65% of the entire budget is used for operating expenditures associated with providing the governmental services that are included in this proposed budget. Out of that amount, $200 million is operating for LUS and communications. When we look at the tax revenue that's included in this budget, the city is the pink and red shades, and the parish are the blue shades. You can see that out of $181 million worth of tax revenue, 62% of that is generated in the city of Lafayette. The remainder is generated in the parish of Lafayette. We talked about the condition of the parish general fund, and I think it's important to note that out of this $62.5 million in parish-wide property taxes, only $4.1 million goes into the parish general fund and is available to fund general governmental services. So this budget includes a lot of things. Here's some miscellaneous statistics that are funded and affected by this proposed budget. Give you a minute to look at it. And I think I'll end where I started, bragging on my staff, number one, for working so hard to make sure to go above and beyond, that they have earned this recognition for applying best practices and going above and beyond for both you and the citizens of Lafayette. And that's it. Oh, I got one more, another one. There you go.
I thought that was really funny that you started your presentation off with awards and ended it with your awards.
Well, sure. I mean, you don't toot your own horn, then who is?
That's a good point. So look, on page 10, there was a word that you used, and it was decrease, and you indicated that it was a good thing.
Just in this case.
Yeah. Because on page 11, there's also the word decrease a number of times, but you did not opine on whether it was a good or a bad thing, and I'm truly interested in knowing.
Sure. So we have a decrease, the decrease in contractual services for the Louisiana TIF. We had had a couple of years' worth of fund balance that built up into the '16-'17 budget that we put into contractual services. Now we are only looking at one year's worth of revenues, so that's why that decreased. That's not a good thing or a bad thing. It's just that we had not budgeted any of those revenues for a few years, and we just did so this year. So now next year, it's going to be a smaller amount because that balance theoretically would be used up this year. The decrease in internal appropriations of $537,000 for transit, we're anticipating that they won't need as much money in fuel. It looks like their fuel costs are coming in way less than what they budgeted. So rather than budget for it and leave it in the fund, we decreased it. So we're hoping that turns out to be a good thing. The decrease in mosquito control contract was a renegotiation of the mosquito control contract. There was a section in the contract for some sort of project mitigation, I believe, that that was maybe removed from the contract, and we settled on a flat amount per month. The increase in internal appropriations of $1.5 million for codes and permits, part of that really has no effect. The reason why that is there is because we had six people funded in the city general fund that were moving to the codes and permits fund, and so we're moving the money along with it. So that's just money moving from one place to the other. It's still city general fund money. The rest of that money is because the codes and permits fund is running out of fund balance and is going to need a subsidy from somewhere to fund the rest of its expenditures. So part of that is a wash, and part of that is another subsidy that we have to provide. The creation of the revitalization, the development and revitalization revolving loan fund is so far proposed to be a one-time transfer of money, and it will not, it's a one-time transfer, but it's never expended because it's loaned, in theory, it's loaned out and paid back. The increase in sick and accrued leave, that's just an estimate based on expected retirements, and that's a number that goes up and down. and that's a number that goes up and down, so we try to budget conservatively.
So, the 2.5, did I understand you to say that it was, it was budgeted in other areas?
What we had in that fund is it built up for a couple of years because we had some projects in the, in the, in the working, but nothing was ever contracted and entered into agreements. And then came fiscal year '16-'17. We entered into some agreements that used several years' worth of money. So now, we're just budgeting for what we would consider one year's worth of money. We're budgeting for what we believe will come in in fiscal year '17-'18. And then, from now on, we'll just budget a year's worth. You'll never see that larger amount like you saw this year.
So when you decrease, what happened is what I'm looking for. When you, rather than budgeting for multiple years, you budgeted for one year.
Next year.
Right.
What's budgeted now stays in place because it's committed.
Correct.
So that doesn't go away. We're just adding one year's worth at a time.
So, so when you, in other words, the decrease is reflective of the timeline?
The decrease is...
It's because you're going for a shorter period?
Is the amount of money that's being added to contractual services is going to be one year's worth from now on, whereas before, it was a couple of years' worth.
Multiple years.
Yeah. We're not actually taking money from that, that fund because there are agreements and contracts in place.
Absolutely.
I knew you were going to ask about that. I should have explained it when I got there.
I think you was, them awards.
Yeah. Next time, I'll call you.
Kind of like alimony. It's not that you was married to the city, it's just that you no longer love the city, so we're going to charge you for it. Mr. Lewis.
Yes, Laurie, on page 10 as well. You talk about the decrease on charges for our services, and we are insured, self-insured for insurance, correct? So how does that affect the revenues from last year to this year? Because it's a decrease, money's being shifted, how? Or is money being shifted? How does that work?
So, what happens, we have a group insurance fund. That's the insurance company.
Right.
So, see, I got to talk with my hands in order to explain this. But that group insurance fund, the insurance company, has revenues coming in. It charges all the different departments for the losses that they incurred. And then it takes apart of the insurance and premiums that we incur, that we pay to, not State Farm or, you know, one of these insurance companies. Those premiums that we pay for this excess catastrophic coverage gets divided up and allocated to all these different departments. So now, the amounts allocated to all the departments are going to be less, and the revenue of the insurance company is going to be less. So it really is a good thing. It just looks like less money for the insurance company, more money for the departments.
So you're saying it is a good thing, a good thing, how? I understand your scenarios, but can you give me an example as far as?
It's a, it's a good thing because we were able to purchase property and excess liability insurance coverage at a lesser amount. And so, therefore, we don't, we charge the departments less. It's a good thing because we had less uninsured losses and less workers' comp claims.
Okay, on page four. What's new?
Yep.
The last one. No general pay increases. When was the last time a pay increase was given?
A general pay increase, I believe, was given the year before last. Yeah.
Say it again, I didn't, I didn't.
The year before last.
That was the last time, what, was it a percentage or was it a one-time?
Was 2%? I'd have to double-check it. I would have to double-check. I'm getting a 2% and a 3%. Maybe it was 2.5. I'll double-check and let you know.
And let me know, how much was it? Can you come back and let us know how much it was? And how much, you know, something would be, how much it would be this time?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Nakam.
Just to, on page 11, that when it regards to Safe Light, Safe Speed Program, how much money are we budgeting in revenue for that? Are we not figuring the program? Is the program even still around?
I'll defer.
Mr. Robidoux.
The program, as it stands at this moment in time, is not around. It, we are in the process of trying to negotiate with vendors to pick it back up. And when that may happen, at this point, I don't know. But certainly, I will keep the council abreast of those conversations. And so, for this budget, we basically said, nothing's going to happen, even though I feel fairly strongly that something is going to happen at some point down the road. And at that point, we would come to y'all with a mid-year budget amendment to reflect that revenue.
What's the adverse? What's, what's the effect by not having it? Does it hurt the city by not having that revenue? You're making it up from the general fund?
Yes, we are using about an extra million dollars in the City General Fund balance in order to fund those costs.
And that's the police and the, and some of the City General Fund is what it currently covers. And so, we're using that out of the fund balance.
Okay, and the reason the program is not in place is due to the contract being not renewed, right? It expired?
That's correct.
Okay. And typically, when the program was in, how much revenue was that? A million dollars to the city?
Net revenue was anywhere between 1 to 1.5.
Okay.
When it started out, it was a little higher.
I got you.
I think it was 1.8 if you go back at the beginning of the program, and it reduced itself down to where we were in that 1.1 million to 1.2 million.
Okay. All right, so it's a good thing that you're decreasing this fund? Or that's one of those things that it's?
Well, it's, it's a decrease in a revenue source that was available.
Yeah, we're going to have to figure out that path forward, and that's something that I will engage the council in those discussions to determine what the next steps are. For some people, they would think it's a good thing for the police and for the fund balance. And for the accountants, they would say it's not a good thing because we're having to use our savings account. That, of that 30% of savings that we have, you know, if we projected that out and said, look, we're going to have to replace a million-two every year going forward, then, then I would argue that that's not a good thing.
Okay. I was just curious about the Safe Light, Safe Speed. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, any more questions for Mr. Toops? Mr. Kong.
Like to thank the administration for very clearly delineating the differences between the parish and the city budgets, which have been requested, and it's very enlightening. As we look at the overall budget, $632 million. Of that, the city is $462 million, and the parish is only $82 million. So thank you for making that point very clear.
Ms. Eber.
Thank you, Chairman. Laurie, where can the public go to find this budget?
It should be online as we speak.
Okay, great.
So they would go to Administration, Finance, Budget, and they should find it there. And I believe a copy of the, this presentation, if it's not out there today, it is out there.
Y'all are so good. And I did have somebody ask me if they can get an Excel spreadsheet of our budget. Is that something that the public can get? There must be a CPA talking on this spreadsheet.
Yeah, it's, it's not really an Excel spreadsheet. It's a series of different PDF, I mean, it's the PDF on the...
All right, perfect. All right, that's all I have, Chairman. Thank you. Great job, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's move to public comments at this time. Are there any blue cards?
Yes, sir, we do have one speaker, Sherman Kaye.
Kaye?
Good evening, council. I'm here...
Kaye, pick your mic up so you don't have to bend down. There you go.
Okay, I'm here today, this evening, to make a request for a pay increase for the employees at LCG like Mr. Lewis was asking about earlier. I think the last, the last pay increase was about two to three years ago. And my request is for, you know, cost of living increase and everything. We all, we all experiencing this in Lafayette. Lafayette is a beautiful city. We take care of it. We maintain it. I'm an employee with the city. And I'm requesting this because, you know, to see if we can, we can move towards just achieving a pay increase for this year, just, just our budget. My only request.
Okay. We appreciate you coming out and expressing yourself. I could tell you that employee increases is always a consideration. This is the proposed budget. We're going to start our line-by-line review at our first hearing, and I'm sure there'll be adjustments possibly made here and there. And then, I'm sure there's going to be a point where that consideration would be given, and a dialogue will take place between the council and the administration to see if there's a way. And I think this government historically has tried to show appreciation to the employees. Especially, I often talk about the employees on that bottom tier. You know, I often use the example at budget time. When you say cost of living, some people don't recognize 2% as much of anything. But I tell people, 2% of $25,000 could buy a family school uniforms for the year. So everything counts, and we recognize that. And, you know, what I could tell you here today as a member of this council, serving as chair as well as finance chair, is that if we could do something for the employees, it's going to happen. We have to be fiscally responsible. The administration has provided us what they feel is a fiscally responsible budget. We're going to try to confirm that, and if we could find a way, I think there are some members who are concerned and willing to work to try to help employees out.
I really appreciate that, Mr. Council. Thank the council for your...
Thank you for your service and what you do.
Thank you very much.
Any other blue cards?
No, sir.
Okay. All right, so the budget has been introduced and presented to us. The council made a motion by Castile and second by Nakam for the record. The LPUA made a motion by Cook and second by Lewis. We've heard from the public, so at this time, we are going to now vote to introduce. First, we will start off with the council. Please call the vote.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District six?
Yes.
District seven? District eight? Motion is approved.
Now a call for the vote from LPUA, and this will be by voice only, no electronic.
District three? District four?
Yes.
District six?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Okay, thank you very much. Meeting is adjourned. We're going to call into order a meeting of the LPPA. Again, this is a public hearing, and blue sheets are available for anyone wishing to address the LPPA. The five-minute rule does apply. Jeremy, could you please read item number two?
Ordinance LPPA 236, an ordinance of the Lafayette Public Power Authority adopting an operating and capital budget of revenues and expenditures for the Lafayette, Louisiana Public Power Authority for the fiscal year beginning November 1st, 2017, and ending October 31st, 2018.
Go move.
Motion by Kong, second by Nakam. Any council discussion? There is none. Are there any blue cards?
Yes, sir.
Okay, please call the vote.
District one? District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District six?
Yes.
District seven? District eight? Motion is approved.
All right, thank you. Meeting adjourned.